Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Welcome. It's an exciting evening. Welcome to the May 7th, 2025 meeting of the Edgemont School District Board of Education. Can I have a motion to bring us back into public session? First, Ami. Second, Heather. First up, we have approval of the April 22nd, 2025 minutes. Can I have a motion? First Grace, second Lesch. Do we have any questions or comments on that? All in favor? Okay. Minutes are... Are you?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Minutes are approved. We do not have a treasurer's report, so we move on to recognition of community. I understand, Madam Clerk, we have two people who wish to speak.
Well, we do, Madam President. Our first speaker is Jonathan Hanson Brook.
Okay, so let me just go through my little speech. Recognition of community includes the opportunity for community members to offer their thoughts to the board. As stated in our policy 1360, we encourage public participation on school-related matters at board meetings, whether those matters are on the agenda or not. However, this is not a forum for the discussion of matters that are not school-related. Board can't and won't respond, but if warranted, the board will follow up on issues raised during public comment outside of the meeting or potentially add it to a future agenda if they are... If there are relevant updates for the community. Each community member can speak for up to three minutes, and well, we only have two people, so that doesn't matter. Jennifer will give you a warning 30 seconds before the end of your time, so you can wrap up your remarks. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you. Jonathan Hanson Brook, President of the Edgemont Teachers Association. I have just a few comments to make tonight. First, I want to thank the district for collaborating with the ETA to bring nationally-recognized internet safety expert, Katie Greer, to Edgemont to discuss navigating the complexities of digital-age parenting. Ms. Greer's special presentation to parents and community members will take place virtually on May 13th at 5:30 PM. Ms. Greer will also provide a companion presentation for students in grades five through eight during the school day. Presentations coincide with the district and statewide move towards creating cellphone-free learning spaces. We hope that families find this conversation beneficial in building healthy habits with cellphones and social media as we strive to ensure the safety and well-being of our students. The PTA and PTSA weekly announcements will have the registration information for the virtual presentation. Second, and most importantly, I want to congratulate my ETA and administrative colleagues who are receiving tenure this evening. Their journey has been long and difficult, and anyone who has been through this process knows that it can be an incredibly stressful three or four years. I'm also sure that it's been incredibly rewarding and invigorating as well. Edgemont sets a very high standard for faculty, and you've all worked incredibly hard, not only to meet Edgemont's expectations, but to surpass them. I also want to extend my thanks to the ETA members and staff in attendance and those watching tonight's meeting online. Your support now and throughout the last four years for your fellow educators, a testament to your camaraderie and dedication as friends and mentors. To our students, I want to say thank you for being part of my colleagues' tenure journey. Just as they have taught you, so too have you educated them. Your enthusiasm, wit, and inquisitiveness have kept them on their toes, very much so, and pushed and helped them hone their craft. You're part of the reason they are the great teachers that they are today, and you will be part of making them even more incredible in the years to come. So to all those receiving tenure, enjoy your big night and congratulations. Tenure is a happy occasion, and we're also here to celebrate a slightly more bittersweet event. There are a few retirements that deserve to be marked tonight. First, Irma Linda Feliciano, a member of her custodial staff, is retiring at the end of the year. Dedicated and hardworking, Irma Linda is a valued member of the staff and her contributions to Edgemont, and especially her laughter and ever-present good humor will definitely be missed. Congratulations, Irma Linda. Lastly, I want to congratulate two ETA members, Alexandra Zizi McDougall and Kristin Kearns, on their upcoming retirement. Anyone?
Don't tell me. Don't tell me.
The applause does not count against my time.
It does not.
Nor the laughter. Anyone who has ever worked with them or been taught by them knows what incredible educators and people they are. Their deep care for their students as learners, and more importantly, as people, is apparent the moment you enter their classrooms. I know I speak for all of my colleagues when I say that it has been, is, and always will be an honor to work with you and be your colleagues. Zizi, Kristin, congratulations.
What?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson Brook.
I am very happy for my mom that she gets to do this. Thank you for everybody who let... Who let her be there.
Thank you, Ms. Van Holland. Is there anyone else? Before we move on to the rest of recognition of community, I would like to note for anyone listening, I am told we've gotten about half a dozen applications for ex officio student board member, and so I encourage people to go to Mr. Hosier's office and pick up that application. It's an exciting opportunity, so.
Okay. Mr. Hosier will recognize some of our Model UN students for their level of distinction in the Horace Greenlee Conference.
Chair, it's tight. I love that we have so many kids here tonight. This is great. It's my pleasure to recognize members of our Model UN team who received awards at last month's Horace Greenlee Conference competition. Blake Feinstein, Sedan Karthik, and Hannah Manassi each earned the Best Delegate Awards. Carla Ruiz Freil and Aman Sharif each won honorable mention. And Ananya Venkata Gharish took home the Outstanding Delegate Award. Congratulations to our Model UN members and to our advisors, Jonathan Hanson Brook and Ms. Chris Sessiri. Thank you.
Next is acceptance of gifts.
Yes, this evening we have close to $10,000 in gifts to present to the board, beginning with the Edgemont Elementary PTA, the amount of $2,560 for Camp Python Programming from Edgemont Elementary PTA, also to Greenville, in the amount of $4,445 for the Successful Study Skills Program from doctors... I had this pronunciation right. Nibana... Nahabana Pudi, in the amount of $2,000, to Edgemont Junior Senior High School for deserving students for their college expenses. And additionally, we have a separate resolution for the board to accept a donated tenor saxophone by Stephen Kaufman.
Okay. I... We can take those together, right?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to accept these gifts? First Grace, second Josephine. Any questions or comments? All in favor? So thank you to the PTA for these... For their generous gifts, which, as always, are going to provide... Is going to provide important additional funding for trips and programs that enhance the experience of our students. I also want to thank Doctors Nibana Pudi for their thoughtful gift in support of a college-bound student, and Stephen Kaufman also. Made the saxophone you donated lead to years of beautiful music. We are tremendously grateful, as always, for our strong partnerships with our community. And none of these donations would be possible without the support of the wider community. So again, thank you to all for your generosity and your support. Next up, I have a report from the Communication Committee. Josephine?
Yes. Yes, so the Communications Committee met on April 29th, last Tuesday. One second, I have my document that's been here. Do I? Did. This was a regularly scheduled meeting with Stu Shinskey from Focus Media. And... Sorry. Accidentally closed my document. The committee's role is to provide advisory-level oversight of the district's communications with the community. We discussed revisiting the policy on responding to public comments at board meetings, which we brought to the Policy Committee for further consideration. We also discussed including a list of topics raised during the public comment period in the board meeting highlights. Dr. Hamilton also had a meeting with Dylan Pine of the ECC scheduled for that afternoon to discuss additional opportunities for community engagement. We also discussed the next two issues of the Edge Magazine. And then Dr. Mozeli joined us to discuss the discontinuation of the holiday-related emails from the DEIB Committee after the end of the school year, June 30th, and exploring other options to involve student groups potentially in celebrating holidays and including an educational component going forward. Dr. Mozeli will bring that idea back to the All Means All Committee, and we'll keep the Communications Committee updated. We also discussed a communications plan regarding the portrait of an Edgemont graduate, including student, staff, and community voices. And we discussed future communications regarding the Blue Ribbon Commission Report, which would cover the next three years and include the impact and meaning for each grade level. Do I get everything you think?
Yeah.
It was a good one-hour meeting.
It was. All right. Thank you. Moving on, I do not have a president's report, so we are up to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Starting on our superintendent's report. On behalf of the board and district team, I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening, and we will open the public hearing on the proposed spending plan for the upcoming school year. The development of the budget reflects our continued commitment to educational excellence, fiscal responsibility, and alignment with our values and priorities in our districts. Tonight's hearing, although required by New York State law, is intended to provide transparency into the budget process and to offer the public a clear understanding of how resources have been allocated to support instruction, student programs, staffing, facilities, and district operations. We recognize that the budget is not just a fiscal document. It is a statement of values and a roadmap for delivering the high-quality educational experience that our students deserve. As part of this hearing, community members may ask questions and offer comments on the budget as presented. Our goal is to ensure that all stakeholders feel informed and confident ahead regarding the upcoming budget vote. To that end, I want to take a moment to thank ECC, PTA, and PTSA for holding the Budget Information Session last week and for those who attended. Following Brian's comments on the proposed budget, we will open the floor to questions. We ask that you please come to the microphone, wait to be acknowledged by the district clerk, state your name before speaking, and we will do our best to respond to your inquiries thoroughly and clearly. Again, thank you for your continued interest and engagement, and this time I'll officially open the budget hearing and pass to Brian.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Just very briefly here before we open up for comments, questions. I got you. So the school budget vote will be held on May 20th. There'll be one proposition on the ballot, and it is for the school budget itself. The proposed and board-adopted budget for the '25-'26 school year is $73,994,549. Also included on that ballot will be three open seats for the school board. This is a contested election, and there will be six names of qualifying residents contained on that ballot. Voting will occur in the San Marco Gymnasium on this campus from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and absentee ballots are available in the district office now, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. They need to be picked up no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, the 19th. And all executed absentee or mail-in ballots must be received in the district office no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 20th. If you have any questions regarding absentee ballots or voter information, this information is available online, and you can reach out to our district clerk, Ms. Massey. As I indicated, the adopted budget is $73,994,549. That represents a budget-to-budget increase of 2.6% year-over-year and comes with an anticipated year-to-year tax levy increase of 1.51%. If you want more information on the budget, including the Budget Book, which is a state-required document that contains a line-by-line analysis, as well as many other elements of the budget, past presentations that were made at Board of Education meetings, including the slide decks, and several other pertinent documents, you can find them online at our business office website. And is that link active and working? Excellent. The link that you see here on the slide is also replicated within the board docs, public comment... Or public portion of the agenda item.
Right. Are there any public comments on the budget as presented? Saying none, that concludes the public hearing on the '25-'26 proposed budget.
All right.
Moving on to the next item, it is a true pleasure to welcome you to this special evening as we gather to celebrate two important milestones in the life of our district: the awarding of tenure and the recognition of our distinguished retirees. Before we get into that, last week on May 1st was National Principals Appreciation Day, and I want to publicly express my deepest appreciation to our school leaders for their dedication to our district. This week, we recognize Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude for the extraordinary educators who make our schools the places of discovery, growth, and belonging. Your tireless commitment, creativity, and passion fuel the success of our students and the strength of our community. You are more than teachers, you are mentors, motivators, protectors, and champions. The impact you have on young lives stretches far beyond the classroom and endures for years to come. So I thank you on behalf of the administrative team and the board. Thank you to ETA for your partnership and for all that you do. In addition, tomorrow marks National School Nurse Day, and I want... I would be remiss not to shine a spotlight on the vital role our school nurses play in safeguarding the health and well-being of our students and staff. You are coming to the storm, the first call when something doesn't feel right, and the steady presence, which ensures every student is cared for with empathy and professionalism. Your work is essential and deeply appreciated. So this weekend, every week, we honor and thank you for showing up, for giving your best, and for making Edgemont a place where students can thrive. In keeping with the theme of recognition, I want to take a moment to speak on the significance of tenure. In Edgemont, tenure is not granted lightly. It represents the culmination of years of careful observation, evaluation, reflection, and professional growth. It is a recognition of consistent excellence of individuals who have not only demonstrated mastery in their craft, but who have embraced our district's missions, upheld our values, and shown a steadfast commitment to our students, families, and community. The tenure progress is one that I believe is quite rigorous for a reason. We understand the weight of what it means to make a long-term investment in an educator. And so tonight, we celebrate those who have earned the distinction through merit, dedication, and unwavering purpose. Equally important, we pause to honor the colleagues who are concluding their careers and entering retirement. Those individuals have left a lasting imprint on our district and on the lives of countless students. Their wisdom, compassion, and steady presence have helped shape the Edgemont we know today. While we will miss you in our day-to-day work, we carry forward the legacy that you leave behind. Tonight is a celebration of impact of lives, lifted minds, inspired futures, and molding people who we will honor in the future. It is about acknowledging excellence and expressing our deepest gratitude for those who make Edgemont a truly special place to learn and grow. So thank you for being here to share in this meaningful celebration, and let's begin. Our candidates before you tonight are Cameron Brandeis, Kamisha McKenzie, Carolyn Piazza, Emily Coleman, Ellen Silverstein, Aaron Trappesso, Gina Peters, Kelly Murphy, Christina Van Hollen, Michael Legrosso, Sabrina Alivalo, Sharon Flynn, Tiffany Cola... Colazini, and Valerie Frolic. And our retirees are Alexandra McDougall and Christine Kearns. Their respective administrators will share additional details in the following order. When your administrator shares their blurb about you, please come to the front of the podium, and you will receive your certificate and a flower that represents Edgemont. Mr. Hosier will present the Edgemont Junior Senior High School candidates, followed by Jennifer Del Conti, who will present to Christina Van Hollen, our CSE Chair. Then Marisa Ferraro will present the Greenville candidates, and Eve Hoistene will present the Sealy candidates. Dr. Mozeli will present at the podium. After we conclude the tenure recognition, we will recess for a brief reception in the hallway for cake and coffee, and then we will resume the Board of Education meeting. Immediately following the presentation, we will get back to business. So before we call our... Before Kyle comes up, I'd like the board to take this item out of order and read into record the resolution before you this evening. It is recommended by the superintendent that a board approve the following recommendations for tenure of candidates who will be eligible for tenure in the upcoming school year listed on your agenda as personnel items I-17 through I-30 by consent vote.
May I have a motion? First, Lesch, second Grace.
All right.
Congratulations, James.
I am going to be here a while, so that's hard. If you asked me to select a teacher who embodies the best of Edgemont, someone who represents our school community with energy, intelligence, positivity, and the ability to build strong relationships with students, I could find no one better than Ms. Sabrina Arrevalo. And I know this because as a student at Hofstra University, their marketing materials also featured Sabrina to represent their school and to attract new students. Sabrina is a Spanish teacher at the junior senior high school who consistently creates fun, engaging lessons for her students. She is committed to empowering her students to take ownership of their learning, knowing that this becomes possible when she differentiates her instruction to meet each student's needs. Sabrina continually strives to create meaningful opportunities for her students to use Spanish in real-world situations during her lessons. She continues to impress her colleagues in the World Language Department with her classroom pedagogy, poise, and effective classroom management. She is an invaluable resource for the middle school teams, thanks to the rapport she builds with her students and her deep understanding of the unique challenges that middle schoolers face. Mr. Jeremiah shared, "We're lucky to work with Sabrina. Her positivity, creativity, and collaborative spirit make her a wonderful colleague. Her contributions to the Builders Club, the volleyball team, and the class of 2027 show her dedication to students in all areas of our school." Mr. Hanson Brook offered, "Before Edgemont, all of Sabrina's teaching experience was remote. Her demo lesson, one of her first in-person lessons, was one of the best I've ever seen. Sabrina's professionalism, poise, and natural teaching ability were clear from the start. She's engaged in constant professional learning, shares new techniques with the department, and is fully invested in Edgemont. In just four years, Sabrina has proven herself a master teacher who always strives to improve." Ms. Flynn added, "Sabrina lights up every space she enters, not just for her students, but for all of us lucky enough to work alongside her. Her caring nature, creativity, and vibrant personality make her an irreplaceable part of our faculty. We're so fortunate to have her and I'm thrilled to celebrate this milestone in her career." Sabrina, Edgemont's lucky to have you. Congratulations on your tenure. Sometimes a name instinctively comes to mind when a new challenge emerges or you need to solve a complex problem. And when the name, the same name repeats itself again and again and again, it says a lot about how much you trust this person, respect them, and value them. For me, that name, that person, is Cameron Brindice. And while she may occasionally wish it was sometimes someone else's name popping into my head, Cameron is constantly the person I turn to when something important needs to be done. Because I know it will be done thoughtfully, thoroughly, and with care. Cameron is a teacher resource specialist specialist at the Edgemont Junior Senior High School. A teacher resource specialist is like a teacher thought partner. Someone who helps teachers design instruction, find curricular resources, and develop new instructional strategies. Cameron has had great success working with our teachers, planning new lessons and units together, and sometimes modeling lessons in classrooms. Cameron Cameron was previously a member of the Tri-State Steering Committee and provided organizational support to ensure our visit was a success. She has also worked closely with administration and the English and math departments to improve our AIS structures. As a crucial member of the AIS team and the EHS data team, she ensures data is used to drive decisions regarding student support. She is meeting regularly with first and second-year teachers at the junior senior high school to support their instructional needs and their transition to the junior senior high school. Ms. Dixie shared, "Working with Cameron brings clarity and calm to the planning process. She listens closely and offers fresh perspectives. I always leave our meetings with stronger plans and renewed confidence." Ms. Sisiri said, "She's a wealth of knowledge and an incredible listener. Cameron always takes the time to understand what teachers need and helps them grow." And Ms. Joseph added, "Cameron leads with thoughtfulness and supports pedagogical shifts that leave a lasting imprint. Her impact across departments is clear and deeply appreciated." Finally, Dr. Roscoe added, "Cameron brings professionalism, positivity, and a solution-oriented mindset to everything she does. She's not just a trusted resource, she's a joy to collaborate with. It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Cameron Brindice for tenure tonight. Congratulations." Insightful, innovative, a systems creator, an expert. These are just a few of the words used to describe Ms. Emily Coleman. Before joining Edgemont, Emily served as a Counseling Department Chair and she continues to prove that she is a change agent. Someone who creates structures and systems that enhance both students' experience and departmental impact. Emily has taken an active and innovative approach to enhancing the college counseling experience for students and families. She created, organized, and facilitated the Junior Kickoff Meeting, a mandatory town hall that introduces juniors to the post-secondary planning process, set in a clear and supportive tone for the journey ahead. She also leads two key annual events, Junior College Night and Financing College Night, offering valuable information and guidance on admissions and financial planning. Emily developed and maintains our annual college and career calendar, a practical resource that maps out important steps in the college process, with semester and summer goal sheets that help families stay focused at every stage. She also spearheaded the transition from Naviance to School Links, guiding the shift seamlessly and efficiently. Ms. Brookman said, "Emily brings fresh ideas that enhance our department, especially Destress Fest. She's knowledgeable, approachable, and always puts students first. Also, her fidget toy game is unbeatable." Ms. Fuentez offered, "Emily is an amazing counselor and systems guru. Her designs and organization, especially with Canva, have leveled up how we share info. And yes, I love the therapy dog at Destress Fest as much as the students." Ms. Moore added, "Emily brings compassion, professionalism, initiative to everything. She led the rollout of School Links, serves on advisory boards, and is deeply trusted by families and students alike. We're lucky to have her." Ms. Flynn added, "Emily's impact is clear in all she does, especially in thoughtful initiatives like Destress Fest. She's innovative, communicative, and also student-centered. Her presence on our team is invaluable. Emily is truly a fantastic addition to our counseling department. Congratulations on taking it." While our school offers a variety of rigorous and demanding courses, few can match the intensity of Calculus BC. Have you ever imagined what it might feel like to need to walk into a Calculus BC class, like say tomorrow? In a course as challenging as this, it is crucial to have a teacher who not only possesses a deep understanding of the subject, but also someone who genuinely cares about the success and wellbeing of her students. And that is exactly what we found when we hired Ms. Valerie Froelich. From the moment Valerie was hired at the junior senior high school, she dove straight into teaching our most rigorous courses, including Honors Algebra II, Precalculus, and Calculus BC. Valerie has proven herself to be both a mathematical expert and an exceptional instructor who knows how to keep her students engaged. She's deeply committed to her craft and is willing to put in the effort necessary to ensure her students succeed. She's constantly one of the first teachers to arrive on campus each morning. Her students not only excel in her classes, but on the AP Calculus BC tests. Valerie's approach to teaching is a balance of direct instruction and collaborative work. She provides clear and effective explanations when introducing new material, but also fosters an environment where students can learn from one another through group activities. Valerie is highly respected by both her students and her colleagues. Valerie, Ms. Forgion shared, "Valerie is a team player. She's always ready to lend a hand to a colleague or offer advice. Her students adore her. They appreciate not only her deep mathematical knowledge, but also her ability to break down complex concepts and make them accessible." Ms. Gallop shared, "Valerie is an integral, pun intended..." Math jokes, I guess. Integral part of the department. "She teaches some of the toughest courses we offer, helps design the new math sequence, and consistently supports her fellow teachers with her expertise in both content and pedagogy. She's adored by her students and is an incredible asset to the Edgemont School District." Finally, Ms. Joseph shared, "Valerie has taken on some of our most advanced math courses, always pushing her students to rise to the occasion while maintaining a classroom environment of care and collaboration. Her impact is clear, as is seen in last year's yearbook dedication to her, a heartfelt acknowledgement from her students of the differences she's made in their lives. Valerie is someone who consistently steps up to help, always contributing to the success of our school as a whole. Valerie, you are a remarkable educator and we're lucky you found Edgemont. Congratulations." When Dr. Hamilton addresses a large group of our faculty, he often reminds teachers to be the teacher that they would want for their own children. With an obvious love of children, a supportive style, a posture of thoughtful questioning, and deep knowledge of her science classes, Ms. Tiffany Colozian is very much the teacher I would want for my two daughters. Tiffany has taught Science VII, Science VIII, Science AICT, and Physics ICT. She consistently designs inquiry-based, hands-on lessons that allow students to discover science through exploration and experimentation. Her classroom environment encourages collaboration, critical thinking, and independence. When students struggle, she gently guides them first to speak to classmates, fostering a sense of community and shared responsibility. Students are also giving or given space to reflect on their learning, to set goals, and monitor their own progress, skills that are essential both inside and outside of the classroom. Ms. Antonachelli shared, "Tiffany is a thoughtful and dedicated educator. She supports her students with care while challenging them to think deeply. I admire how she makes topics like chemistry and physics feel meaningful and relevant. She helps students see the real-world value in what they are learning." Ms. Bayless added, "Tiffany has helped foster a love of science in both middle and high school students. She creates a positive classroom where questions are welcomed and she's worked closely with colleagues to align curriculum and prepare students for the eighth grade science test." And Erin Egan said, "Tiffany has a real gift for teaching eighth grade. Her enthusiasm is contagious and she's always willing to help with anything the team is doing. We're so happy for her." Ms. Joseph added, "Tiffany has been an invaluable member of our community, bringing expertise, a positive attitude, and a collaborative spirit to everything she does. Her ability to connect with students and create a supportive learning environment environment has made a real difference. Tiffany Colozian is a teacher who exudes warmth, passion, and support while maintaining high standards for her students. She has more than earned tenure in Edgemont. Congratulations." Coming to a new school as the new guy, replacing a beloved teacher is never a position you want to be in. What are you supposed to do when someone keeps saying to you, "You have big shoes to fill"? How do you respond to that? What do you do? You put your head down and you get to work. You plan thoughtful lessons, you give helpful feedback, and you make the band program at Edgemont your own. This is exactly what Mr. Michael LaGrosso did when he left New York City and came to Edgemont. Michael has quickly established strong relationships with students and colleagues. He demonstrates a deep passion for music, engaging students during and beyond the school day through small and large group interactions. Michael designs an engaging and inclusive curriculum for instrumental lessons, junior high and high school band, and AP music theory. He involves students in selecting performance material, allowing them to vote on high-quality pieces that align with their goals. Additionally, Michael uses restorative circles and fair process practices to facilitate discussions on ensemble rehearsal strategies, group strengths, and areas for improvement. Michael is receptive to feedback and demonstrates a commitment to continuous improvement. Ms. Robinson Chen shared, "When we set out to hire someone nearly three years ago, we knew we needed someone passionate about music and capable of forging real connections with students. Michael stood out. While new to Edgemont, he showed drive, humility, and an unwavering focus on doing what's best for these students. He asks thoughtful questions, seeks feedback, and reflects deeply on his practice. He genuinely cares about each student, knows their strengths, and works hard to meet their individual needs." Ms. Flynn added, "What stands out most about Michael is his growth as an educator. His willingness to reflect, to take feedback, and thoughtfully incorporate it into his teaching is something I deeply admire. He's managed to take that feedback and turn it into something special. While staying true to his own style, I'm so proud to celebrate this well-earned accomplishment. Michael, you didn't need to fill anyone's shoes because you created your own path. Congratulations on tenure." When a new colleague enters our school community, they may feel hesitant at first to offer too many ideas or to speak up because of Edgemont's strong reputation for excellence. With over a decade decade of experience as a school psychologist, Ms. Kelly Murphy knows and cares far too much about her students to simply go with the flow. From the moment I met Kelly, I knew she was a student advocate who could make a positive impact on our school community. In addition to being a phenomenal school psychologist, Kelly teaches an eighth grade teen talk class focusing on life skills and emotional problem solving using adaptive D B T techniques. The course helps students build confidence and navigate challenges through mindfulness, stress management, empathy, bullying prevention, and decision making. Kelly also co-facilitates group meetings in the Phaedrus Program, supporting emotional well being, resilience, and positive peer relationships. As part of the child study team, she meets weekly to address academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and family-related concerns by developing actionable plans to ensure students receive the support they need. Dr. Shapiro shared that Kelly has been a terrific addition to our department. She's bright, creative, sensitive, and a fierce advocate for students. I've also appreciated our conversations about parenting and finding balance between work and family. I'm overjoyed she's here to stay. Dr. Greenwald noted that Kelly has been a wonderful addition to our team. She's an insightful, resourceful clinician who advocates fiercely, solves problems creatively, and cares deeply. If you need a contact or a resource, Kelly is your person, supporting students and staff in immeasurable ways. Ms. Moore added that Kelly is a talented and compassionate psychologist who brings deep care and commitment to every student. Her supportive presence and knowledgeable and knowledge make her invaluable. Students regularly stop by her office just to talk or say hello, evidence of the trusting relationships she builds. Finally, Ms. Flynn shared that Kelly Murphy is truly remarkable. Her expertise and steady presence have made her a trusted go-to across the school. I've seen the strong relationships she's she builds with students. It's clear how many seek her out for support and guidance. Kelly, please keep taking your vitamins so you have a long and healthy retirement. Congratulations on tenure. All right, this is this is my last one for tenure at least. A line of students outside her office before before school, lunch, and after school. Students asking if they can have one of their pictures on her office walls. Students sharing sensitive information so we can help solve a problem or provide support to students. Teachers emailing, calling, and stopping by her office to seek guidance and support. Parents expressing appreciation for how she supports students and handles behavioral issues. The impact of her work and her ability to build strong relationships is undeniable. Ms. Sharon Flynn has made and will continue to make Edgemont Junior Senior High School a better, safer, and more supportive learning environment for our students. Ms. Flynn began her career as an English teacher before becoming an administrator. I often wonder how she has maintained her incredible energy for over 20 years in school leadership, especially since she insists that she's still 29. Her mastery of scheduling is nothing short of incredible. She collaborates closely with counselors and department chairs, anticipating challenges, streamlining semester pairings, and always putting students at the center of her decisions. Beyond scheduling, Ms. Flynn has been a key leader in improving school safety. As the building emergency response team lead, she has strengthened our emergency drills, enhanced visitor entry systems, reinforced I D policies, and led new threat assessment training for our mental health team. Her leadership has made a real lasting difference in keeping our campus safe. Mr. Giraffano offered Sharon brings great energy to any conversation or gathering. She always has a pep in her step and cares deeply about young people. Sharon is a great thought partner who can take charge of any situation, especially when a smile and a laugh are needed. Ms. Moore shared Sharon has brought exceptional leadership and a deep commitment to our students and school community. From the moment she joined the Edgemont team, she seamlessly integrated into our school, quickly forming strong, meaningful connections with students, faculties, and families. Sharon creates an environment where students feel valued, heard, and supported. I watch daily as students stop by her office just to say hi or share something about their day, a true testament to the relationships she has built. I can always count on Sharon to handle any situation quickly and thoughtfully. Ms. Joseph added, over the past two and a half years, I've had the privilege of working alongside Sharon Flynn as a fellow assistant principal. Sharon has shown unwavering dedication to the physical safety of our school community, taking on the often thankless job of developing and implementing safety plans. Her attention to detail and passion are evident in all she does. She also works tirelessly to strengthen our relationship with the Greenberg Police Department. Her efforts have made a significant and positive impact on our school. I appreciate how Sharon is always willing to help, rolling up her sleeves to take on more, even though her to-do list is never complete. Your leadership, efficiency, and devotion to our school make you an indispensable part of our administrative team. I truly can't imagine Edgemont running as smoothly without you. Sharon, I'm grateful to have you both as a colleague and as a friend. Congratulations. And I turn it over to Ms. Delcante.
So I have the pleasure tonight to introduce Christina Von Holland. Christina, would you come up? Christina is truly an exceptional special education teacher whose work had made an impact on raised that are both profound and lasting. The role of a C S E chairperson is one that requires patience, creativity, and a deep empathy. Christina has consistently gone above and beyond to ensure that every student, regardless of ability, had the opportunity to learn, grow, and succeed. Special education is not just a job, it's a calling, and Christina has answered our call with grace and determination every single day. She ensured students are recommended with programs and supports that reflect inclusivity, understanding, and hope. The relationship she has cultivated with staff and families reflect a deep respect for the unique potential within every child. Dr. Greenwald shares Christina has been a welcome addition to the P P S department. She is organized, thorough, and always willing to talk things through and discuss anything. She brings with her a wealth of information and provides thoughtful and balanced approach to all C S E meetings she chairs. She had the pleasure to work with, and I appreciate her being a part of our team. From Dr. Shapiro, Christina is honest, dedicated, and her knowledge of special education is encyclopedic. Armed with that, she leads C S E meetings with confidence and sensitivity. She is a great resource and even better colleague. I look forward to working closely with her for years to come. Eve Warestein, an administrator, said Christina's collaborative approach and deep understanding of student needs help guide effective student-centered decisions for all learners. Christina, welcome, and congratulations on this role to her recognition.
Good evening. I am thrilled to be here tonight to speak about two outstanding Greenville faculty members who are being recognized tonight for tenure. Erin Trapasso has a true gift, and she has been a true gift to Greenville and to our students. Since joining? Since joining the Greenville community in 2022, Erin has distinguished herself as an exceptional educator through her work as a third grade teacher, a K six reading specialist, and currently as a second grade teacher. Erin consistently brings organization, adaptability, and care to every role she holds, ensuring that her students receive the highest quality education. At the core, Erin's teaching is a deep commitment to student-centered learning. She makes it a priority to understand each student's strengths, areas of growth, and personal interests, tailoring her instruction to meet diverse needs and foster academic success. Her classroom is a true model for a positive learning culture where mindfulness, social emotional learning, and inclusivity are integrated seamlessly. Erin is a certified yoga and mindfulness instructor for children, and that is evident in everything she does in her classroom. Children start each day with calm breathing to help them feel focused and ready to learn. She teaches fun and relaxing mindfulness activities that help everyone manage big feelings and stay centered throughout the day. Ms. Trappasso helps her students build confidence, feel safe, and take care of their minds and hearts so they're always ready to learn and grow together. Erin creates an inclusive space by offering students choice in how and where they work and encourages family involvement in all things. Her classroom truly emphasizes collaboration, empathy, and respectful communication. Beyond the classroom, Erin is a consummate learner. She is engaged, and I could list them and go on and on and on, but so many professional learning opportunities that just grow and enhance her practice. She is truly committed to her ongoing learning. Erin's passion, dedication, and innovative practices make her a vital member of Greenville of the Greenville faculty and a powerful influence on the lives of her students. Her colleague shared a lot, I'm going to share a sample of it, from Laura Signorelli. Erin is truly dedicated to her students. She has been an asset to our district and our school. She exhibits wonderful judgment and professionalism when making decisions. The impact that she has on her students is beyond outstanding. From Gem Chima, Erin is a dedicated teacher who is supportive of both students and colleagues. She carries a warm and calm presence and is always happy to lend her colleagues a helping hand, especially with reading instruction. Stepping inside her classroom even briefly can give you a sense of her passion for teaching and the meaningful connections she develops with her students. From Phil Nicolosi, Erin just doesn't teach content, she teaches children with all of the care, patience, creativity, and thoughtfulness that this role demands. As a colleague, Erin is generous with her ideas, time, and encouragement. From Amanda Benke, I feel incredibly fortunate to have taught alongside Erin. She is collaborative, open-minded, genuine, and has contagious creativity. Learning from Erin has been invaluable, and getting to know her as a friend has made teaching even more special. Erin, it is hard to capture your awesomeness and to do it justice. I hope I've done even just a part of it here, and I'm so happy you're here. There is no way, and I mean absolutely no way, to be happy, positive, and enthusiastic when you were in Kamisha Mackenzie's presence. She truly She truly lights up every space she enters and the faces of every student she works with. It's impossible to imagine Greenville without Kamisha. I hope I never have to find out. Kamisha has been and has been a dedicated and impactful teaching assistant at Greenville, consistently demonstrating her passion for education and her support for students. Known for her collaborative nature, Kamisha balances teamwork with independence, trusting both the expertise of the colleagues she works with and her own leadership instincts. Her warm personality, sense of humor, empathy, and vibrant energy enrich the classroom environment and inspire all who are around her. She plays a pivotal role in creating a calm, inclusive space where all students feel safe, understood, and motivated to succeed. Kamisha brings exceptional skill in breaking down complex material, enabling students to better grasp concepts and build confidence. Her approach is rooted in inclusion and social emotional learning, and she supports each student with who have a wide range of needs using culturally responsive teaching, individualized support, and assistive technology to empower them and help them grow. Her commitment to professionalism is evident in her impeccable organization, strong communication with families, and thoughtful instructional design. She nurtures well-rounded growth, preparing students with with both academic knowledge and real-world skills. Kamisha also actively contributes to the broader Edgemont community through her leadership and athletics, including serving as head varsity coach for Edgemont's track and field team and her membership on the athletic sports committee. Her colleagues had a lot to share, so I'm going to share a sample. In the classroom, Kamisha is a game changer. Her positive attitude and quick sense of humor make her a joy to work with, and her adaptability is unmatched. No matter the challenge, she rolls with the punches and does whatever she can to ensure that every student has the opportunity to succeed, and she does so with a smile. Every teacher, every classroom needs a Kamisha. That's from Jen Credendino. From Hannah Otman, Kamisha is kind, thoughtful, and hardworking. She goes above and beyond for all her students. She is patient, caring, and always finds creative ways to differentiate the learning for her students. From Sean Ford and Danielle Cacciotti, she is a consummate team player, always willing to go above and beyond her daily responsibilities. Working with her is a pleasure, as her positive attitude is infectious to everyone around her. She brings the same energy on the first day of school that she does on the last day in June, demonstrating an unwavering commitment. We are truly fortunate to have the great joy of working alongside her as a colleague and a friend. From Julie Shelton, Kamisha has nurtured the athletic abilities of countless students, instilling in them values like teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship. It is rare to find someone who can excel in so many areas, teaching, coaching, parenting, and still maintain a level of excellence that inspires all of those around her. Kamisha is that rare individual. Congratulations, Kamisha. I could truly go on and on. I could speak about your professionalism, compassion, and drive for days. You are truly deserving.
And congratulations to everyone who has already received this honor tonight. Tonight, I have the pleasure of speaking about Gina Peters, an exceptional educator who has brought flexibility, dedication, and warmth to Sealy Place over the past four years. Gina is joined tonight by her parents, Chris and Peter. Thank you for being here to celebrate Gina and for teaching her how to bake amazing treats for our Sealy celebrations. Gina began her work at Sealy following the pandemic and assuming what could be considered a tough role in elementary schools, sixth grade math. She took on this role with professionalism, leadership, and a commitment to every student. She's taught all students in math and did it in a manner that inspired even the most reluctant learners to love math. She also collaborated across disciplines, working with the science team on cross-curricular projects, and played a vital role in the seventh grade math placement process. Gina approached her role with an "I am the student" transition to E H S, aligning the curriculum and collaborating with our colleagues at Greenville and E H S. In an inspiring display of flexibility and professionalism, Gina made the leap from sixth grade math to first grade, embracing an entirely new developmental stage with energy and commitment. She has created a nurturing classroom where young learners feel confident, curious, and supported. You are amazing. Gina's colleagues were asked to share
Some stuff about you?
Okay. And I condensed it all to one paragraph.
And I condensed it all to one paragraph, but I can tell you who said what. Whether in sixth grade or first, Gina's classrooms are inclusive, engaging, and well-structured. Her positive behavior systems and her ability to connect with students across all abilities reflect her deep care for their growth. I had the pleasure of working alongside Gina in sixth grade, and in that time, I saw firsthand the dedication, heart, and professionalism she brings to the classroom every single day. Gina consistently fostered a classroom environment where students felt seen, supported, and challenged to grow. Gina is a supportive teammate, always ready to collaborate, share ideas, and bring positivity to the team. When faced with the challenge of moving from sixth grade to first grade, Gina used this challenge as an opportunity to grow as a teacher. If you walked into her classroom, you would never think this is her first experience teaching first grade. Gina has earned the admiration of her colleagues for thoughtfulness, professionalism, and a collaborative spirit. Gina, your willingness to adapt, your innovation, and your heart for students have made a lasting impact across grade levels. Because of all of this and more, I'm so proud and honored to stand with you tonight in support of your recommendation for tenure, or as her students said today, your 10th year. Caroline? Oh, that's not louder. Caroline? Tonight, I have the honor of speaking about Caroline Piazza, our dedicated and passionate library and media specialist at Sealy Place. Caroline is joined this evening by her parents, John and Victoria, her Uncle Tom, and her boyfriend Dan. I should probably point out to you, when Caroline started at Sealy Place, they thought she was my daughter. Thank you for being here and for raising a very special person. Caroline began her work at Sealy Place in September 2021, stepping into her first school-based role with great enthusiasm. Caroline walked into the library on the first day and was like, oh. She came in all summer long to set up that library, to make it a space that was welcoming, inviting, academically exciting for our students. Over the past four years, you have transformed it into a dynamic place of learning, curiosity, and community. Whether students are browsing for books, exploring steam stations, taking a break from recess, or just looking for a quiet moment to recharge, Caroline has made the library a welcoming, inclusive space that supports every learner. And your contributions extend far beyond the shelves of the library. She has created a story walk outside of Sealy Place. She brought in a giant hot air balloon into our APR. She creates digital bitmoji libraries to celebrate cultural events. She hosts book clubs. She inspires kids with OSBots. She's taught after-school clubs. More than anything, Caroline has showed us the power of an amazing school librarian. For Caroline, we asked families to share feedback, and I received an unbelievable amount of emails. They shared. This is synthesized again. Ms. Piazza is an absolute treasure to Sealy Place. She is creative, knowledgeable, and generous. She has the ability to connect to kids in the most humble, genuine, and kind way. She has a special talent for fostering a love of reading in children. Her enthusiasm for books and learning is contagious and goes above and beyond to ensure that every child finds joy in reading. Ms. Piazza stands out not only for your intelligence and dedication, but for your kind and welcoming nature. And what truly sets Ms. Piazza apart is your ability to create an inclusive and engaging environment for all students. Caroline, your hard work, creativity, and compassion have made a lasting impact on Sealy Place. Because of all of this and more, I am proud and honored to stand with you tonight in support of your recommendation for tenure. She's here. She found it. Tonight, I have the pleasure of speaking about Ellen Silberstein, a truly dedicated, warm, and compassionate teaching assistant who has made an impact on our youngest learners at Sealy Place. Ellen is joined tonight by her husband Scott and her son Ian. Thank you for joining us tonight and for sharing your mom and wife with us every day. A little-known fact about Ellen is that she began working in Edgemont in 2016. So some of you may recognize her from her days working as a substitute teacher at EHS. Uh-huh. Right? Right? And somehow, when, a few years ago, she came to Sealy Place as a substitute teacher, and finally, as a teaching assistant. Since stepping into that role, Ellen has become a valued and essential part of our early childhood team, primarily supporting students in kindergarten and first grade. Whether leading full-class instruction or providing small group and one-to-one support, your presence fosters a warm and engaging environment with our youngest learners. If you walk into the classroom in the morning, you will see Ellen either helping the kids unpack, helping them read, teaching them to write, and teaching them to get along. These are very important life skills. In addition, Ellen's dedication extends beyond the school day. She has organized after-school programs for both Sealy and Greenville students, including a winter class designed specifically for those who may be hesitant to participate in after-school activities. Ellen is a common steady force who builds connections with students and teachers. So it seemed appropriate that for Ellen, we asked the students how they felt. They are the experts. They shared the following. When I'm sad, Ms. Silberstein makes me feel better. Ms. Silberstein is like a cleaning fairy. She helps us do stuff. Ms. Silberstein always tries to make people happy. This is a, if you work in an elementary school, this is a big one. Ms. Silberstein brings us to the nurse's office and makes us feel better. Ms. Silberstein helps me with math and never gets mad. Ms. Silberstein makes my day better by making me happy every day. Miss, I know. Ms. Silberstein listens to us and smiles to us. Ms. Silberstein helps me write a book. Ms. Silberstein makes sure we never have to go to the principal's office. Yeah, I know. All the kindergartners are running. And perhaps the most telling, she makes my day happy because she loves me. I know, this is a good, yeah, this, okay. Her colleagues echo the same sentiments as do everyone. And Ellen, your professionalism, kindness, and unwavering support of students and staff have made you an essential part of the Sealy Place community. Because of all of this and more, I am proud and honored to stand with you tonight in support of your recommendation for tenure.
We will now transition from our recognition of tenure to recognizing our two retirees at the junior/senior high school. Each summer, typically in August, I receive phone calls from parents anxious about their child's schedule. As parents, it makes perfect sense. Parents want the right teacher for their child, someone who is supportive, who builds their study skills, strengthens their academic abilities, and most importantly, helps them grow in confidence as individuals. And while parents and students don't get to choose their teachers, every summer, without fail, I get the same request. Can my child please have Ms. Kearns as their teacher? There is no greater testament to a teacher's impact than hearing parents explain, sometimes at length, all the reasons why their child should have Ms. Kearns. This speaks volumes about her reputation, her connection with students, and the trust that she has built within the Edgemont community. Kristin has spent 32 years in education, 31 of which have been here at the junior/senior high school. And as a special touch, when Kristin received tenure, she was here with her parents, and her parents are in the audience tonight as the retired. She began her career as a part-time health teacher, then went on to earn her special education certification because she wanted to support the students who needed it the most. Over the years, she has taught every grade level at the junior/senior high school and has brought strong content knowledge in both math and science to her classrooms. But more important than her content expertise is Kristin's ability to connect with students that has been the true cornerstone of her work. She has a rare gift, the ability to create a safe and supportive classroom where students with learning differences feel seen, understood, and gain confidence. For more than three decades, Kristin has helped students build their skills and believe in themselves, and she's done it with grace, care, and love. Ms. McDougall said, Kristin has the magic all teachers wish for, incredible classroom management, simultaneously closeness and connection with the kids. Mr. Ford shared, Kristin truly embodies what it means to be selfless, always putting others, students, colleagues, friends, and family above herself. Mr. Davis added, Kristin has always led with kindness, gave her all to every student, and inspired us all to do better just by being herself. Finally, Ms. Joseph offered, Kristin Kearns has made an extraordinary impact as a special education teacher, consistently going above and beyond to support all learners. Her dedication to her students has inspired many to pursue careers in teaching. She's been an invaluable thought partner for me, especially when it comes to final exam planning, offering insight and collaboration that has helped shape our approach. And as Darren Hawkes so eloquently said, when we consider what one person can contribute to the good of a community through children, we are in awe of the difference you've made here. Kristin, thank you for your decades of service, for supporting our students, and for being a wonderful colleague and friend. Congratulations on retiring. As a new principal in Edgemont, I remember visiting classrooms with Dr. Michael Curtin, who held the position of Director of Curriculum. And after one visit to a science classroom, we found ourselves taking more time to talk about the lesson than we had actually spent in the classroom. We were struck by the teacher's deep knowledge, her calm professionalism, the way she posed thoughtful questions and truly listened to her students. That teacher was Ms. Alexander Zizi McDougall. Zizi is retiring at the end of this school year after 18 years in Edgemont and over 20 years in total as an educator. Throughout her time here, she's been a valued member of our science department. She's reflective, passionate, and always willing to try something new. She has taught a variety of courses, but her heart has always belonged to environmental science. In fact, she was the one who introduced AP Environmental Science to Edgemont. She doesn't just teach about the environment, she lives it. From the car she drives, to the field trips she leads to the Bronx River, to the way she has run the environmental club, Zizi encourages students to examine their environmental footprint and connect with the natural world around them. As Sharon Bayless put it, Zizi is more than just an educator. She is a motivator, a cheerleader, and a constant source of encouragement for her students. Her enthusiasm for teaching is evident in everything she does, and her positivity is contagious. Kristin Kearns, her co-teacher, shared, Zizi is the best co-teacher and the ultimate partner. Our classroom is a true partnership. She is respected across campus by her colleagues as well as her students. If you stop by her room, there is always a positive vibe in the air. She has successfully fostered an environment that encourages questioning and exploration, promoting curiosity and a love of learning. She is a true professional and a wonderful friend. Ms. Joseph added, Zizi has brought her deep love of earth and environmental science into every lesson, making science come alive for her students. Whether it's sharing a photo of the moon when it's visible in all its glory or incorporating her daily observations and travels, she has always shown her students the real-world relevance of what they are learning. Zizi, thank you for being a model of professionalism, for your passion and caring about our planet, and for being a lifelong learner for our students and school community. As you enter your retirement and get to spend more time with your family and traveling this planet that you care so deeply about, please know that you are greatly missed. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Mozeli, and I'm the Director of Human Resources. I just wanted to share that tonight is one of the most special nights of the year. It's the time of the year where we celebrate teachers who are coming into the family and teachers who have served the family for so long and have left a legacy. I'd like to thank Dr. Hamilton for his recommendations and the Board of Education for supporting those recommendations because without them, we don't get to grow as a family. As the Director of Human Resources, I've had this position for about a year. I've had the absolute privilege and honor of getting to know many of you personally, and I can attest to the value that you bring to the students and to the administrative team every single day. And as a parent of a senior who will be soon graduating, I can tell you firsthand that we are so lucky to have you as a part of our teaching staff. It is an incredible experience for students to come through and out of the Edgemont Union Free School District. So please, you know, thank yourselves, thank your families, have your families that are here to support you. I just think this is the beginning of a very long relationship. And just look around. This is Edgemont. This is the essence of Edgemont. This is what belonging and inclusion is. This is what partnership is. And every day should try to mimic the energy that's in this room here today. I just want to thank you all for everything you have done. Now, I just wanted to mention one little thing. There was one person who got tenure a little off-schedule, Mr. Brian Paul. He got tenure a few weeks ago and was recognized at that time, but I would like to embarrass him with flowers now, if you will indulge me. This is extra special because once a teacher, now an administrator, we can see that truly it's just one fabric. We just are different parts of the same piece that We just are different parts of the same piece that is what Edgemont is. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Hamilton and the Board of Education so that we can probably go into a recess and celebrate all of you with some cake and coffee.
Well, actually, if you would indulge me...
Oh, yes.
We have like five minutes left in the meeting. I'm committing a cardinal sin, getting between y'all and cake. And I beg for your forgiveness, but should probably wrap up about five minutes. Dr. Hamilton, if you could move on to the...
Let me just say, I have a special affinity for this group of tenure candidates tonight because this is the... This group is the group that came in when I came in. And the very first teacher recommendation I made was actually Gina Peters. So as superintendent, Gina was the very first teacher I appointed as a probationer. So I'm especially proud of this group and want to thank you for being here tonight and thank you for your service. And to our retirees, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for your service. I've had nothing but a tremendous experience with you and everything that I've heard. And to all the folks who got tenure tonight, I'm honored to be able to say I have had the privilege of being in your classrooms and know firsthand about the quality of education you bring to our students. So I'm deeply honored for that.
Okay, I swear this part is quick.
Okay, yes.
Consent agenda.
Yes, move on to consent agenda. And it is the recommendation of the superintendent that the following recommendations be approved by consent vote personnel items I-1 through I-16, which includes appointments for leaves, per diems, chaperones, resignations, correction to prior appointments, authorization to sign stipulation of settlement agreement, and resignations, which I already said. Student Matters J-1, the Committee of Recommendation for the Committee on Special Education, and Business Items K-1 through K-23, approval of budget transfers, amendment to designated bank depositories, establishment of liability reserve, authorization to transfer reserves, emergency authorization for repair of the Edgemont Junior/Senior High School fire alarm system, approval of various agreements, and authorization to accept and award bids, and authorization to extend non-resident status.
Same motion. First grade, second, no less. Are there any questions or comments?
The New York State is called the Liability Reserve. We're permitted to deposit up to 3% of the annual budget into that at any point in time. Certainly, that's not the threshold we'd be seeking at this point. The Liability Reserve can be used for any future liabilities that may come to the district. Settlement agreements that are unknown to the district that we may have targeted now in our budget. At year-end, those aren't to remain in any carryover funds. They must go into a reserve for that purpose for subsequent years. You may recall in October, when Jeff Shaver came, our auditor, to discuss our financial standing from the end of the year, he had made the recommendation to the board that with this new reserve, it would be a good opportunity for us to identify some future needs and to put money in that place as opposed to some other areas like the ERS and TRS Reserve, which are very well-positioned at this time.
Okay, so, all in favor? The consent agenda has passed. That is the end of this meeting. Our next business meeting will be Tuesday, May 27. Before that is the budget and board vote on May 20. Meetings begin at 6:00 PM. And go have cake. Congratulations.